For February 11, 2025. May I have a roll call, please?
County Commissioners Bartlett, Cruz, here. Devoe, here. Duffy?
Here.
And for the record, County Commissioner Duffy is on the phone right here. He hears me, and we will try to get his voice through the system as best as we can. But he has joined the meeting telephonically. County Commissioners James?
Here.
Deputy Director Lazara?
Here.
Director Lapore?
Here. Can I have the announcement of the open public meetings law?
Ladies and gentlemen, notice requirement that open public meetings law has been satisfied with respect to this meeting specifying the time, date, and location, including the annual notice, adopted the reorganization meeting filed with the county clerk and posted in the administration building mail to two newspapers in accordance with provisions of the law.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I ask Sheriff Adama to lead us. If everybody please face the flag, point your hand up with your heart, and join me as we honor this great nation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence first to remember our county historian for 50 years who just passed away, Ed Smike, and also remember all the men and women who have died while serving in the United States Armed Forces and who have died from COVID-19, especially the 2,322 residents of Passaic County. Thank you. I have approval of minutes, a motion for January 21, 2025.
So moved. Second.
Cruz, second by Devoe. Roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlett, I'm sorry. Cruz?
Yes.
Devoe?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
That's a yes from Duffy. James? Deputy Director Lazara?
Yes.
Director Lapore?
Yes. I have a motion to approve the proclamations.
So moved. Second.
By Devoe, second by Cruz. Roll call.
County Commissioners Cruz?
Yes.
Devoe?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
A yes from Duffy. James? Deputy Director Lazara?
Yes.
Director Lapore?
Yes. Administrator's report?
Thank you, Director. Tonight, we have our Black History Month celebration, and I'm going to turn things over to our Master of Ceremonies, Commissioner Devoe.
Oh, my voice carries. I apologize. Bring it down a little bit. We want to welcome you to the Black History Month Celebration of the Board of County Commissioners for 2025. They make sure I say to keep it brief and keep it moving, so I have a little thing I want to read real quick. The theme for this particular year is Black History Month for 2025 is African-Americans in Labor. And as you can see throughout the program, we have three that are here, but we have four great individuals who has contributed their work ethics and their perseverance and relevance to Passaic County in the labor union as well as in their work ethics. So we are honored to have these four individuals be honored today, and as we go forward, you'll see who they are. Black History Month serves as an essential reminder of the profound impact that Black individuals have had on the world throughout history and who are continuing to fulfill the dream today. Is it a time to dedicate to recognize the struggles, resilience, and accomplishments of Black communities whose contributions have been overlooked or forgotten? The purpose of this month is not only to celebrate the richness of Black culture, but also to foster awareness, understanding, and educate about the ongoing fight for racial equality and justice. By spotlighting the achievements and challenges of Black people, Black History Month provides an opportunity to reflect on the progress made while acknowledging the work still needed to create a more just society. It encourages us to learn from history, honor the past, and actively shape a future where everyone, regardless of whatever their race, is treated with dignity and respect. So thank you for joining us as we celebrate Black History Month 2025. We will now have an invocation by Reverend Jason Mitchell, who will be introduced by Father Patrick Ryan. Following that, we will have the Tectone Choir sing the Black National Anthem, and after their selection, no, no, wait, not yet. All right, following the invocation, we will have the choir sing, and after the choir gets up, they will have two selections, and we will honor our honorees. Thank you very much. Now you can. Father Ryan.
Yes.
Thank you. I'm honored always to be the chaplain to our county commissioners, and I just wanted to put a plug in for Commissioner Duffy, who is not here tonight, and he is recovering, and I ask you to keep him in your prayers that this recovery keep going. Amen. I like that. We don't say that in church.
Amen.
You know, and I always say this, when I see a crowd, I see a collection. Yeah? Amen. So it's my great privilege to introduce the Reverend Jason Mitchell, who is the Senior Pastor of Peoples Missionary Baptist Church. And Reverend, if you'd come up? Oh, you were up already. You want that collection.
We could bow our head and close our eyes. Sweet hour of prayer. Sweet hour of prayer that calls us from a world of care, visits at our Father's throne, makes all our wants and wishes known. Seasons of distress and grief, our souls have often found relief and off escaped the tempter's snare by thy return. Sweet hour of prayer. Let us pray, God of our weary years, God of our silent tears, thou who has brought us thus far, along the way, graces, God, in your name. We come, first of all, just to say thank you. Before we ask for anything, we want to thank you for everything. We thank you for our lying down last night. Then early this morning, you decided to touch us with a finger of love. Allow us back here in the land of the dying while waiting to be in the land of the living. For that, Lord, we say thank you. We thank you for this occasion, for this program to celebrate Black History, for your word has told us how good and how pleasant it is for brothers and sisters to dwell together in unity. Over the years, we have experienced things that have not been good nor pleasant. We thank you for today, today to be able to celebrate that which once was a reality that is now somewhat Black history. We understand, God, that there's still work to be done, and so we ask that you continue to endow us with your strength as we continue to plow forward to do the work that you have called us to do. We thank you for today. We thank you for every commissioner, every leader that is in the room, every honoree. We pray that you will move and supermove as we know that you can, as we know that you will. We pray this prayer in your name. Let everyone say amen. May we all stand for the Black National Anthem. May be seated. 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 I've got a crown up in a black kingdom in a black good news. I've got a crown up in a black kingdom in a black good news. I'm gonna take down this moon, put my shoulder up on my cross, take it home to my Jesus in a black good news. Take it home to my Jesus in a black good news. Take it home to my Jesus in a black good news. Let's give a round of applause to our co-directors, Mr. Jose Martinez, accompanied by Mr. Parker, and my true Black excellence, my good thing, Dr. Deanna Devoe. I gotta go home, so I gotta make sure I take care of business. So once again, we thank you for being here. We're going to ask our colleagues to come, and colleague Commissioner Cruz, to give the first proclamation of our first honoree, and he's going to introduce her, and we're going to follow by him. We're going to ask Director Lapore to have the second proclamation, and I'll follow up and end with our third proclamation in that order. Thank you very much, guys.
Hello, everyone. Good evening.
Good evening.
Let me just begin by saying Black History is American history. It is the story of pioneers, activists, entrepreneurs, educators, and everyday heroes who have shaped our nation and continue to shape our communities. Their legacy will be woven into the fabric of our society, and it's our duty not only today, but always, to acknowledge that and those who carry it forward with action, equality, and justice. And so I have the distinct honor of leading us off this evening with an individual who meets and has proven all of those qualities throughout their career. And so at this time, I'll ask our first honoree, Ms. Therese Calhoun, to please come up and Whereas, the month of February has been designated as Black History Month and in recognition of the unbounded contributions and achievements made by exceptional African-Americans that have shaped and continue to shape our nation and our county's rich history and bright future. The Board of County Commissioners of the County of Passaic deems it fitting and appropriate at this time to honor and recognize Therese Calhoun. Whereas, Therese Calhoun received an Associate's Degree in Science in Business Administration from Essex County College in Newark, New Jersey, and a Bachelor's Degree in Applied Management from Grand Canyon University in Phoenix, Arizona. Whereas, Therese Calhoun in 2008 departed from the East Orange School District as a Community Outreach Coordinator to join the Jersey Nurses Economic Security Organization as a community organizer. She spearheaded a community campaign to avoid the closing of St. Mary's Hospital in Passaic, New Jersey, to date saving over 1,500 jobs. And the success of that campaign ended with the coalition members receiving a proclamation from the City of Passaic. Whereas, Therese Calhoun collaborated with organizations and city officials to independently organize and implement community drives such as collections with Jersey Cares, Three Kings in Newark and Passaic, Back to School Supplies in the City of Passaic, and NASA's Place that served children and families affected by autism, Christmas celebrations with selective families in Newark Elementary School, and served the homeless at St. James Church in Newark, just to name a few things that she's done. Whereas, Therese is September of 2014 worked closely with the Newark Health Department to chair the first annual led awareness walk that consisted of 150 daycare aged children along with the healthcare providers of the JNESO members and the Newark Health Department employees. And whereas, Therese is married to her husband David and together have raised two sons, Adisa and Jelani. And now for, let it be further proclaimed by the Passaic County Board of County Commissioners to hereby publicly recognize and applaud Therese Calhoun for the significant contribution she has made to the County of Passaic and the community. And let it be further proclaimed that this board wishes Therese's health and happiness in all her future endeavors. Congratulations.
Thank you.
So each honoree is also getting proclamations and recognitions, one from our Passaic County Clerk, Danielle Island Imhoff, and from the New Jersey State Legislature as well.
Nice, nice. Oh, wow. I don't have any more hands.
I would like to first thank the commissioners for honoring the four of us for something that we all love doing. I mean, but it can't be no better than that. And I would also like to thank my family for over the years. I'm out there in the community, and they would say, where are you going now? Where are you going now? But they was always there. When we was fighting in St. Mike's in Newark to save the hospital because they wanted change it to emergency only, my husband came with me in the morning, 6:00 in the morning, dunking donuts, getting donuts for the nurses, so that when they came on the line, they had donuts, they had coffee. Everybody liked coffee. They needed coffee to start the day. But I want to mention first, I didn't always go into community. First, I chased the dollar. I'm gonna say it. I did. I was an internal auditor and a financial analyst in New York. But my DNA kicked in after a while and said, no, no more pushing papers, no more meeting deadlines. It is time to roll your sleeves up and touch people. Okay? So that's when I came back across the water into New Jersey, and I said, where should I start? I said, in the schools where my son's attending. So I joined the PTA, asked a lot of questions, and they was like, the principal said, you asked too many questions. Guess what? They have an opening, a job for you to work in the school. That's to shut me up. Okay? Okay? But little did they know, they still gonna have somebody fighting, and sure enough, that's what I did. What we did was, as parent coordinators, and that was in all of Abbott districts, it was in Passaic, Patterson, everywhere. And we would educate the parents on what their rights are, and they got so educated that the administration didn't like it, so they tried to get rid of us. But little did they know that we had already reached out to the community, we reached out to legislators, we already organized the parents. So elected officials, everyone, came out, and they said, no, you're not gonna get rid of them. They are helping the parent. I mean, we filled the auditorium with parents. This was in the East Orange School District. We had all kind of elected officials come out and support us. So we saved our job, but it was time to go to another destination. Where is that? The union. The union. So what I did from there is went to work for a healthcare union, saving hospitals, going out in the community, getting our nurses out in the community. And along the way, when you're doing these things, you meet people, and I met some wonderful folks. When I first came to Passaic, and that was to save St. Mary's, her name was Zaida Palaco. I came to her, someone sent me to her, someone from UPO. I don't know if anyone knows UPO. They sent me to her, and she said, Teresa, anything you need, I'm here. So therefore, it opened up the board education, everybody. We galvanized everybody, filled the auditorium with mayors from different cities to come to save St. Mary's. It was three hospitals, it became one, and I was charged to save that hospital. Thanks to Zaida and all the other people that opened their doors, we saved the hospital going forward. It was another hospital, St. Mike's in Newark. So it was always a fight, but along the way, you meet wonderful people, and you cannot do this alone. And that's when I'm gonna speak on the Passaic Labor Council. Oh, my God. They are like a family, but that comes from leadership. Tom is our leader, the president of the Passaic Labor Council. He...
You're gonna cry. I know, you're gonna cry. He's a cry.
You may see him, he seem tough and all that stuff, but his heart is as large as this room. He cares about everybody, anything, it's a tea, all of us. He say, whatever you need, I'm here. He bought some flowers that, well, he said they was rented. So I'm just gonna have them tonight, then he gonna take them back. And that one. And so I just want to say, yes, the job is great. I love what I do, and I don't see it as a job. I see it as a mission, a mission, but it's in my DNA because my family, they did stuff like this. So I want to thank you all, thank the, oh, you guys were great. You guys were great. And also, I want to thank my family. I have to come back to them because they was, they there with me all the time. I really, really appreciate it, and thank you all. Thank you.
You're gonna take a picture with the commissioners, maybe you'll have your husband and your family come up.
Okay, yeah.
Why don't you and the family join us for a photo?
Why don't you, the family join us for a photo? Congratulations again.
Okay, once again, good evening, everyone. It is my job to honor Michael Hall. Michael, would you join me up here?
Whereas the month of February has been designated as Black History Month and in recognition of the unbounded contributions and achievements made by exceptional African-Americans that shaped and continue to shape our nation and the county's rich history and bright future, the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Passaic deems it fitting and appropriate at this time to honor and recognize Michael Hall. Michael Hall was born and raised in Patterson, New Jersey. He is a husband, a father, a small business owner, and Michael Hall has been a dedicated public servant in the community for the last 20 years. And in 2024, he was promoted as the first African-American Deputy Chief for Patterson Fire Department in charge of training. In charge of training and EMS. Michael Hall is a member and Vice President of Bronze Heat, the Patterson Chapter of the International Association of Black Professional Firefighters. Under this organization, he participates in many community services that include carnivals, bookbag giveaways, school and community cookouts, donations to women and children at various shelters throughout the city, and holiday parties for the children of Patterson. Michael Hall, along with his organization, takes part in visiting children in the Pediatric Oncology Unit of St. Joseph Hospital where they deliver gifts and host pizza parties to uplift the children's spirits. Michael Hall enjoys being an advocate for education, visiting various public schools to educate children and young adults on fire safety, and shares information on becoming future firefighters. He's also a football and baseball coach for the kids. Michael continues his patronage by putting together an old-school gym in Eastside Park for the Patterson community every summer, which has become a huge success and continues to grow each year. Whereas Michael Hall in 2012 received the New Jersey State FMBA Patterson Valor II Award, receiving a Black History Month Resolution from the City of Patterson for community service in 2018, received a Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Community Service Award in 2018, along with countless awards from Bronze, from Bronze Heat. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Passaic County Board of County Commissioners that it hereby publicly recognizes and applauds Michael Hall for the significant contributions that he has made to the County of Passaic and to the community. Be it further proclaimed that this board wishes Michael Hall health and happiness in all of your future endeavors. Congratulations.
It can be very short compared to all the accolades that she had. I can't, I can't fill her shoes with everything that she's done. But following you up is, it's a tough crowd here with this one. But thank you to the County Commissioners, I appreciate this award. Again, I don't, I don't do this for awards, honestly. Thank you to my family, they've always supported me, everybody. Chief Alasea back there, everybody who's here to support me, the Bronze Heat President, Allison Dixon is here, Letty, everybody, I appreciate you guys. Again, I don't do this for awards. I was born and raised in this city, you know, it seemed very easy to me to give back because we all know, people always have negative things to say about Patterson all the time. They don't know what goes on here, they don't know the history, they don't know the people. You start counting how many people come from this city that did great things, I don't care if they're athletes, if they're teachers, if they're whatever. Patterson has a rich, genuine history and to be a small part of that, you know, I appreciate it. But again, I don't do it for awards. Just like to thank President Dixon, like I said, when I joined the Bronze Heat, he accelerated my, you know, community give back, you know, service here. I was doing it already, I wasn't a member at the time, and he just said, "You might as well come on over, man, you, you already out here with us, you know, as it is." And, you know, again, doing a community cookout that he mentioned is a huge thing because like I said, everybody talks about Patterson, Patterson always, you know, gets a negative vibe, but we've been doing that cookout now for eight, nine years, something like that. Never had one incident. Not one thing has went wrong in that park. Everybody comes out, they see us in the street, you guys having a cookout, people just want to have a, you know, come and have a good time. That's all they want to do and I, you know, I appreciate the fact that everybody enjoys that and they come out there and have a good time. But again, talking to the kids is great. I love talking to the kids, they want to be firemen and it's, it's good to see them, you know, they look up to you and they want to be like you, which I never thought anybody would want to be like me, but, you know, it, it's just kind of cool giving back. But again, thank you, Chief Alasea back there, always supporting me, I appreciate you, chief. Thank you very much. But again, thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it. Just so you know, this family picture is gonna be pretty big.
Michael, we also have a proclamation from our County Clerk Danielle Ireland Imhoff and from the New Jersey Legislature. They've all given you this. All right, pictures. Come on up.
I apologize. I gave you a shout out. Our next honoree, we're gonna call of Mr. Jackson. When I first met this gentleman, I was actually campaigning. But I talked to you on the phone prior to that. Tom Kelly harassed me and gave him my number and he, he called me about an issue prior to me actually meeting you face to face. And when I met the, I met you at Brownstone.
Yes.
And ever since then, this guy, speaking of heart and willing to work, he's the epitome of that. So Mr. Jackson, it was, it was a pleasure to, to select you as, as honoree today.
Thank you.
So the Board of County Commissioners, County of Passaic, New Jersey, whereas the month of February has been designated as Black History Month and in the recognition of the unbound contributions and achievements made by exceptional African-Americans that shaped and continue to shape our nation and the county's rich history and bright future, the Board of County Commissioners of Passaic County deems it fitting and appropriate at this time to honor and recognize Brian Jackson. And whereas Brian Jackson was born and raised in Patterson, New Jersey, and attended John F. Kennedy, no problem. And whereas Brian Jackson has been an active member of the community coaching Little League over, for over 15 years, and whereas Brian Jackson was honored as a grand marshal of the Labor Day Parade and was voted top 50 labor leaders in New Jersey. And whereas, you can applaud. And whereas Brian Jackson was introduced to the apprentice program for, for Composition Roofers Local 10 in 2006. Since then, he has held many positions that included journeyman, foreman, executive board member, vice president, recorded secretary, and president. And whereas Brian Jackson is now the business manager and financial secretary, treasurer for Ruffer Local 10, and in 2023 became the president of the Passaic County Building and Construction, Construction Trades and Council. And whereas- And whereas Brian Jackson has, has been happily married to his high school sweetheart-
Jashina.
-Jashina Jackson for over 23 years, and together they have three children, Brian-
Bria Asia.
-Bria Asia, and beloved four-legged member Jordan. And now therefore, let it be proclaimed-
I got it.
Oh, Jasir. Jasir, stand up Jasir. All right. Can't forget the legacy. Now therefore be it proclaimed by Passaic County Board of County Commissioners, it is thereby publicly recognized and applauds Brian Jackson for his significant contribution he has made to the Passaic County Passaic and the community. And be it further proclaimed that the board wishes Brian Jackson health and happiness in his future endeavors. God bless you, congratulations, sir.
Wow, thank you, everybody. By the way, just hear your name is on this, on a proclamation.
Hold on.
I would not, I would, your mother would kill me if I forgot you. But no, thank you, this is, this is a huge honor and I, I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. I want to start off by thanking the Commissioners. Thank you, Mr. DeVore. He gave a, a short, a short memo of how we met. And it was crazy because we played phone tag back and forth for a couple of months and then, you know, like he, I chased him in a Brownstone and I cornered him and I got him. So, and we have been, we have been close ever since. So I, I consider Rodney as, as a friend and everybody on this board. I, I really appreciate you guys. I'm not gonna be long-winded like my young lady over here. And I don't have, again, he stole my, he stole my thunder when I was gonna say that, but however, I don't have as many accolades. I, I've been on his job for a very short stint, so my speech is not gonna be that long as well, but I'm here to say that I'm gonna be here for a while, so get used to seeing me. I am deeply honored to stand before you today as we celebrate Black History Month. This, this, this month is, is a time to reflect on incredible contribution and achievement of African-Americans throughout history and to recognize the ongoing journey towards equal equality and, and justice. As someone who was born and raised in Patterson, I've always been inspired by the strength of our community. I'm proud to serve as the president of Passaic County Building and Construction Trades Council, business manager, financial secretary, treasurer of the roofers. These roles has allowed me to witness firsthand the dedication and hard work of so many individuals who strive to make a difference every day. This is my council, a few members of my council back here, I'd like to recognize my vice president, Scott LaMorticella, Chad, Frankie, Jim, I appreciate you guys. I'm particularly proud, I'm particularly proud of the work we have done to support and uplift our community from coaching Little League over 15 years, like Rodney mentioned, to being honored as a grand marshal, again, with my, my good friend Tom Kelly and Sue Butterfield who's not here tonight, who, who we are part of this thing like the Big Three we call ourselves. And I'm grateful for the love and, and support of my family who I would not be standing here today if it was not for them. They keep me going, they keep me busy and I just want to thank them. And my, my beautiful wife, Jashina, like Rodney, I gotta go home tonight. My, my oldest son, Brian, and God willing, my future daughter-in-law, Jalen. Jasir will not be forgotten, and my beautiful daughter, Bria Asia. As we celebrate Black History, let us remember the sacrifice and triumphs of those who came before us. Let's continue to work together and build a brighter future for all. I thank you all.
Can we have Mr. Jackson's family come up for photos? We will now have two more selections by the tech tone choir. Let's give them a round of applause, they come forward.
You are the strength of my life. Good Lord, I believe. My eyes to the heavens. Glory, I have discovered from you. The peace you give me is a vast soul. You are the source of my strength. You are the strength of my life. I live my hands in total praise to you. Good Lord, I believe. My eyes to the heavens. Glory, I have discovered from you. The peace you give me is a vast soul. You are the source of my strength. You are the strength of my life. You are the strength of my life. I live my hands in total praise to you. Amen. 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 Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yes, I'ma call you auntie. Thank you, auntie. Tech Tone Choir, another round of applause for the Tech Tone Choir. This concludes our Black History Celebration. We want to thank everyone listed on the back of our program, and we want to also invite everyone here to, uh, partake of some food downstairs, uh, hosted by John Jack's Soho Restaurant Lobby, first floor. Welcome. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Commissioner, but before, uh, before we conclude.
Oh, before, yep.
We just want to recognize a lot, a lot of dignitaries came out, uh, for this celebration. We want to make sure we recognize all of them, right, Commissioner? We have Marilyn Fryerson, uh, representing Assemblywoman Shavada Sumter. We have, uh, we have our sheriff, uh, Thomas Adamo. Thanks for being with us, Sheriff. Uh, under sheriff, Narda Pacha. Our, our newest captain in the sheriff's office, Captain Katie Bonilla. Welcome.
Chief.
I'm sorry, Chief, Chief Bonilla, sorry. Uh, everybody's favorite Reverend from Seminary Baptist, Reverend Steele, who's getting down. Uh, Passaic County Improvement Authority Commissioner Mike Romaglia. Deputy County Clerk, Luisa Towich. Luisa, she's still here. Uh, Passaic County School Board Member, Christina Schratz. Welcome, Christina. I don't think I understand one. And that's it now, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Minister. Now you can partake of some food downstairs, first floor, hosted by John Jack's Soho Restaurant. Thank you very much. Get home safely. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Yes, I'ma call you auntie. Thank you, auntie. Tech Tone Choir, another round of applause for the Tech Tone Choir. This concludes our Black History Celebration. We want to thank everyone listed on the back of our program, and we want to also invite everyone here to, uh, partake of some food downstairs, uh, hosted by John Jack's Soho Restaurant. Thank you very much. Get home safely. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Yes, I'ma call you auntie. Thank you, auntie. Tech Tone Choir, another round of applause for the Tech Tone Choir. This concludes our Black History Celebration. We want to thank everyone listed on the back of our program, and we want to also invite everyone here to, uh, partake of some food downstairs, uh, hosted by John Jack's Soho Restaurant. Thank you very much. Get home safely. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Yes, I'ma call you auntie. Thank you, auntie. Tech Tone Choir, another round of applause for the Tech Tone Choir. This concludes our Black History Celebration. We want to thank everyone listed on the back of our program, and we want to also invite everyone here to, uh, partake of some food downstairs, uh, hosted by John Jack's Soho Restaurant. Thank you very much. Get home safely. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Yes, I'ma call you auntie. Thank you, auntie. Tech Tone Choir, another round of applause for the Tech Tone Choir. This concludes our Black History Celebration. We want to thank everyone listed on the back of our program, and we want to also invite everyone here to, uh, partake of some food downstairs, uh, hosted by John Jack's Soho Restaurant. Thank you very much. Get home safely. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Yes, I'ma call you auntie. Thank you, auntie. Tech Tone Choir, another round of applause for the Tech Tone Choir. This concludes our Black History Celebration. We want to thank everyone listed on the back of our program, and we want to also invite everyone here to, uh, partake of some food downstairs, uh, hosted by John Jack's Soho Restaurant. Thank you very much. Get home safely. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Yes, I'ma call you auntie. Thank you, auntie. Tech Tone Choir, another round of applause for the Tech Tone Choir. This concludes our Black History Celebration. We want to thank everyone listed on the back of our program, and we want to also invite everyone here to, uh, partake of some food downstairs, uh, hosted by John Jack's Soho Restaurant. Thank you very much. Get home safely. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Yes, I'ma call you auntie. Thank you, auntie. Tech Tone Choir, another round of applause for the Tech Tone Choir. This concludes our Black History Celebration. We want to thank everyone listed on the back of our program, and we want to also invite everyone here to, uh, partake of some food downstairs, uh, hosted by John Jack's Soho Restaurant. Thank you very much. Get home safely. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Yes, I'ma call you auntie. Thank you, auntie. Tech Tone Choir, another round of applause for the Tech Tone Choir. This concludes our Black History Celebration. We want to thank everyone listed on the back of our program, and we want to also invite everyone here to, uh, partake of some food downstairs, uh, hosted by John Jack's Soho Restaurant. Thank you very much. Get home safely. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Yes, I'ma call you auntie. Thank you, auntie. Tech Tone Choir, another round of applause for the Tech Tone Choir. This concludes our Black History Celebration. We want to thank everyone listed on the back of our program, and we want to also invite everyone here to, uh, partake of some food downstairs, uh, hosted by John Jack's Soho Restaurant. Thank you very much. Get home safely. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Yes, I'ma call you auntie. Thank you, auntie. Tech Tone Choir, another round of applause for the Tech Tone Choir. This concludes our Black History Celebration. We want to thank everyone listed on the back of our program, and we want to also invite everyone here to, uh, partake of some food downstairs, uh, hosted by John Jack's Soho Restaurant. Thank you very much. Get home safely. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Yes, I'ma call you auntie. Thank you, auntie. Tech Tone Choir, another round of applause for the Tech Tone Choir. This concludes our Black History Celebration. We want to thank everyone listed on the back of our program, and we want to also invite everyone here to, uh, partake of some food downstairs, uh, hosted by John Jack's Soho Restaurant. Thank you very much. Get home safely. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Yes, I'ma call you auntie. Thank you, auntie. Tech Tone Choir, another round of applause for the Tech Tone Choir. This concludes our Black History Celebration. We want to thank everyone listed on the back of our program, and we want to also invite everyone here to, uh, partake of some food downstairs, uh, hosted by John Jack's Soho Restaurant. Thank you very much. Get home safely. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Yes, I'ma call you auntie. Thank you, auntie. Tech Tone Choir, another round of applause for the Tech Tone Choir. This concludes our Black History Celebration. We want to thank everyone listed on the back of our program, and we want to also invite everyone here to, uh, partake of some food downstairs, uh, hosted by John Jack's Soho Restaurant. Thank you very much. Get home safely. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Yes, I'ma call you auntie. Thank you, auntie. Tech Tone Choir, another round of applause for the Tech Tone Choir. This concludes our Black History Celebration. We want to thank everyone listed on the back of our program, and we want to also invite everyone here to, uh, partake of some food downstairs, uh, hosted by John Jack's Soho Restaurant. Thank you very much. Get home safely. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Yes, I'ma call you auntie. Thank you, auntie. Tech Tone Choir, another round of applause for the Tech Tone Choir. This concludes our Black History Celebration. We want to thank everyone listed on the back of our program, and we want to also invite everyone here to, uh, partake of some food downstairs, uh, hosted by John Jack's Soho Restaurant. Thank you very much. Get home safely. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Yes, I'ma call you auntie. Thank you, auntie. Tech Tone Choir, another round of applause for the Tech Tone Choir. This concludes our Black History Celebration. We want to thank everyone listed on the back of our program, and we want to also invite everyone here to, uh, partake of some food downstairs, uh, hosted by John Jack's Soho Restaurant. Thank you very much. Get home safely. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Yes, I'ma call you auntie. Thank you, auntie. Tech Tone Choir, another round of applause for the Tech Tone Choir. This concludes our Black History Celebration. We want to thank everyone listed on the back of our program, and we want to also invite everyone here to, uh, partake of some food downstairs, uh, hosted by John Jack's Soho Restaurant. Thank you very much. Get home safely. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Yes, I'ma call you auntie. Thank you, auntie. Tech Tone Choir, another round of applause for the Tech Tone Choir. This concludes our Black History Celebration. We want to thank everyone listed on the back of our program, and we want to also invite everyone here to, uh, partake of some food downstairs, uh, hosted by John Jack's Soho Restaurant. Thank you very much. Get home safely. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Yes, I'ma call you auntie. Thank you, auntie. Tech Tone Choir, another round of applause for the Tech Tone Choir. This concludes our Black History Celebration. We want to thank everyone listed on the back of our program, and we want to also invite everyone here to, uh, partake of some food downstairs, uh, hosted by John Jack's Soho Restaurant. Thank you very much. Get home safely. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Yes, I'ma call you auntie. Thank you, auntie. Tech Tone Choir, another round of applause for the Tech Tone Choir. This concludes our Black History Celebration. We want to thank everyone listed on the back of our program, and we want to also invite everyone here to, uh, partake of some food downstairs, uh, hosted by John Jack's Soho Restaurant. Thank you very much. Get home safely. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Yes, I'ma call you auntie. Thank you, auntie. Tech Tone Choir, another round of applause for the Tech Tone Choir. This concludes our Black History Celebration. We want to thank everyone listed on the back of our program, and we want to also invite everyone here to, uh, partake of some food downstairs, uh, hosted by John Jack's Soho Restaurant. Thank you very much. Get home safely. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Yes, I'ma call you auntie. Thank you, auntie. Tech Tone Choir, another round of applause for the Tech Tone Choir. This concludes our Black History Celebration. We want to thank everyone listed on the back of our program, and we want to also invite everyone here to, uh, partake of some food downstairs, uh, hosted by John Jack's Soho Restaurant. Thank you very much. Get home safely. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Yes, I'ma call you auntie. Thank you, auntie. Tech Tone Choir, another round of applause for the Tech Tone Choir. This concludes our Black History Celebration. We want to thank everyone listed on the back of our program, and we want to also invite everyone here to, uh, partake of some food downstairs, uh, hosted by John Jack's Soho Restaurant. Thank you very much. Get home safely. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Yes, I'ma call you auntie. Thank you, auntie. Tech Tone Choir, another round of applause for the Tech Tone Choir. This concludes our Black History Celebration. We want to thank everyone listed on the back of our program, and we want to also invite everyone here to, uh, partake of some food downstairs, uh, hosted by John Jack's Soho Restaurant. Thank you very much. Get home safely. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Yes, I'ma call you auntie. Thank you, auntie. Tech Tone Choir, another round of applause for the Tech Tone Choir. This concludes our Black History Celebration. We want to thank everyone listed on the back of our program, and we want to also invite everyone here to, uh, partake of some food downstairs, uh, hosted by John Jack's Soho Restaurant. Thank you very much. Get home safely. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Yes, I'ma call you auntie. Thank you, auntie. Tech Tone Choir, another round of applause for the Tech Tone Choir. This concludes our Black History Celebration. We want to thank everyone listed on the back of our program, and we want to also invite everyone here to, uh, partake of some food downstairs, uh, hosted by John Jack's Soho Restaurant. Thank you very much. Get home safely. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Yes, I'ma call you auntie. Thank you, auntie. Tech Tone Choir, another round of applause for the Tech Tone Choir. This concludes our Black History Celebration. We want to thank everyone listed on the back of our program, and we want to also invite everyone here to, uh, partake of some food downstairs, uh, hosted by John Jack's Soho Restaurant. Thank you very much. Get home safely. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Yes, I'ma call you auntie. Thank you, auntie. Tech Tone Choir, another round of applause for the Tech Tone Choir. This concludes our Black History Celebration. We want to thank everyone listed on the back of our program, and we want to also invite everyone here to, uh, partake of some food downstairs, uh, hosted by John Jack's Soho Restaurant. Thank you very much. Get home safely. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Yes, I'ma call you auntie. Thank you, auntie. Tech Tone Choir, another round of applause for the Tech Tone Choir. This concludes our Black History Celebration. We want to thank everyone listed on the back of our program, and we want to also invite everyone here to, uh, partake of some food downstairs, uh, hosted by John Jack's Soho Restaurant. Thank you very much. Get home safely. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Yes, I'ma call you auntie. Thank you, auntie. Tech Tone Choir, another round of applause for the Tech Tone Choir. This concludes our Black History Celebration. We want to thank everyone listed on the back of our program, and we want to also invite everyone here to, uh, partake of some food downstairs, uh, hosted by John Jack's Soho Restaurant. Thank you very much. Get home safely. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Yes, I'ma call you auntie. Thank you, auntie. Tech Tone Choir, another round of applause for the Tech Tone Choir. This concludes our Black History Celebration. We want to thank everyone listed on the back of our program, and we want to also invite everyone here to, uh, partake of some food downstairs, uh, hosted by John Jack's Soho Restaurant. Thank you very much. Get home safely. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Yes, I'ma call you auntie. Thank you, auntie. Tech Tone Choir, another round of applause for the Tech Tone Choir. This concludes our Black History Celebration. We want to thank everyone listed on the back of our program, and we want to also invite everyone here to, uh, partake of some food downstairs, uh, hosted by John Jack's Soho Restaurant. Thank you very much. Get home safely. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Yes, I'ma call you auntie. Thank you, auntie. Tech Tone Choir, another round of applause for the Tech Tone Choir. This concludes our Black History Celebration. We want to thank everyone listed on the back of our program, and we want to also invite everyone here to, uh, partake of some food downstairs, uh, hosted by John Jack's Soho Restaurant. Thank you very much. Get home safely. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Yes, I'ma call you auntie. Thank you, auntie. Tech Tone Choir, another round of applause for the Tech Tone Choir. This concludes our Black History Celebration. We want to thank everyone listed on the back of our program, and we want to also invite everyone here to, uh, partake of some food downstairs, uh, hosted by John Jack's Soho Restaurant. Thank you very much. Get home safely.
Forward to offset loss of revenues in prior years or in that current year. And that's what we've tried to do moving forward.
So because we had to obligate all of the ARB funding by December 31st of last year, it means we started this year in a $30 million revenue hole. So we had to figure out a way to build a balanced budget, starting down $30 million. So talk a lot about stabilizing taxes. This is the ninth consecutive year that the county tax rate has been lowered. Basically what this, I'll let Rich get into what the county tax rate is.
So the county tax rate is basically, it's a formula, right? It's the tax levy divided by the equalized values. And you can see over time, the tax rate has gone down and that's a function of two things. One, we've had a very stable tax levy increase each year, or no increases in a number of years. So the levy overall has been relatively stable. But the second part of that are the property values. Each year, the equalized values of the county have risen dramatically and the tax levy divided by the equalized value has resulted in net decrease, a decrease every year in the overall tax rate.
So if I was better at using PowerPoint, there'd be another lineup here showing that appraised values going up and the tax rate going down. And that's what we want. That means there's growth and stable budget in Passaic County.
Just along with the property values, you know, with the continued rise in property values, it just shows that people are interested in investing in Passaic County. They're building businesses, they're making improvements. It's centrally located, you know, near New York. It's just a great county to be located in.
So responsible budgeting and stabilized taxes. Our average tax levy increase over the last nine years is 0.64%. We had a number of years where we held taxes completely flat and when we do increase taxes, it's at a very low rate. You know, basically what this slide is showing you that is that, you know, right now in 2025, we're operating the budget with the same amount of money as we did nine years ago, which, I mean, I'm sure you all put together budgets and as the years go by, things cost more, but we're continuing to do more with less. There's a lot of investment in a lot of things, all while operating on dollars from 2017.
Rich, can you just touch on, looking at the graph that shows five years in a row with no tax increase, that doesn't mean that some municipalities didn't have an increase, a county increase. Now, isn't that the pose of the value?
Right.
The value of the town keeps shifting?
So the county tax levy is allocated across the municipalities based on the equalized values. The equalized values within each town changes each year. And because of that, you could have one town that pays a little bit more one year and the next year they could pay a little less depending on how those values shift. So it's kind of allocated proportionally.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
So as I said at the start, one of the things we have collectively are having a lot of conversations about is maintaining the highest ever credit rating that Passaic County's achieved at AA1. It's our fifth year at AA1. This is a snippet from a press release from when we sold bonds last year for the Passaic County Community College. There's a variety of things that are going to go into this credit rating. The growth in fund balance, which we're going to talk about, and how important our fund balance is to give us financial flexibility, our conservative budget practices. You know, we're not, we're not playing games. There's no gimmicks in this budget. We're very conservative with our revenue projections so that we make sure that we're regenerating surplus. We're not using one-shot sales of property or things like that to balance this budget. We're relying on sustainable revenue sources that we know are going to be there if we're projecting that they're going to be there. And again, speaking to what Rich is talking about, what this credit rating is showing is that people want to invest in Passaic County and that the county is continuing to grow.
If I might interject for a second, because you know, I hate to be quiet. This is the validation of everything that this, this and the previous boards have done over the last 12 or 14 years for the county and for the taxpayers. This is a third-party independent, these guys won't even take a cup of coffee from a government or a client. This is the validation that everything that's happened, the youth detention center closing, now more recently, the decision not to spend $800 or a billion to build a new jail and close the jail and contract with other counties to house the prisoners. This is the validation that everything that the commissioners before you, the freeholders, have done was the right thing to do. And I think each and every one of you, especially, we call him the Budget Hawk, mostly because he's got shorthands, that all the things that have been done and discussed and all, sometimes the painful things that everybody went through, this validates that everything that you did was the right thing to do. And we're here with 0.64 of 1% average tax increase over the last nine years. And we have the highest rating and continue to maintain. Getting, getting the rating is one thing. Maintaining the rating is a whole different animal. The rating agencies are very slow and very cautious in terms of upgrading a credit, but they'll downgrade you in 10 seconds. All you need is a blip. And we've been very successful. You guys have been, gals, guys have been very successful over the years doing the right thing.
And Steve's right. It's a testament to this board over the last 20 years that, you know, the previous administrator and Steve and Rich and the people in these positions often come to the commissioners to make hard decisions that aren't popular, but make financial sense and are the right decisions for the taxpayers, whether they know it or not. And oftentimes, you've made those hard decisions and this is the product of those hard decisions of how far we've come as a county from, you know, Steve can tell you what it was like in the 90s to where we are now. It's night and day.
He was a, in high school in the 90s or grammar school or something.
Grammar school in the 90s, yeah.
I was here.
So we continue to increase fund balance to keep us on sound financial footing. As you see, in 2015, we had a little over $34 million in fund balance. We ended last year with over $113 million. You know, another question we talk about a lot is, you know, when is enough enough? And if COVID, if the public health emergency showed us anything, that you never know. And, you know, if you remember the press release from Moody's from before, one of the things they talked about, you know, continuing to improve, even though it was a credit shrink, is increasing our fund balance. So what this does is it gives us financial flexibility. And Steve can tell you, you know, he walks, he works across the state about governments that aren't in this position and they weren't able to deal with crisis like we are. You know, there was a reason why we were the first county in New Jersey to set up a COVID testing site. It's because we had flexibility and we could deal with emergencies that no one was expecting.
The question over the years has always been, how much is enough? And it was a tough question because there was no definitive thing you could point to to say, well, that's enough, or that's too much. Or what we learned, as Matt said, during COVID, it's never enough. You can never have too much money. You can never have too much financial flexibility. It's, again, the governments that were in good shape, I mean, at the end of 2019, you had $77.5 million of fund balance. It helped do the things that you needed to do when you needed to do it. Other governments that weren't as fiscally pruned and conservative as Passaic County has been, had their struggles. And they were doing emergencies and special emergencies and pushing money off from 2020 to 2021 to 2022. You didn't have to do that. We were able to ride out the pandemic and still not raise taxes and still help the taxpayers of the county. And so the answer to the question is now, it's never enough.
Well, if I can add to that, you're right, Steve. The shape that the county was in, yes, the shape that the county was in at the start of the pandemic enabled us to get through it. But I caution everyone, even though, you know, we have a healthy number there right now, with the chaos coming out of Washington right now, with the, I don't know what's going to happen. And I'm afraid that this money here won't be enough in the event that the chaos works its way down to the states and the counties. I mean, I'm very, very nervous about this. I'm nervous for, you know, things like Meals on Wheels. I'm nervous for things like Eva's Kitchen. I'm nervous for the Board of Social Services and all the good things that they do. I'm worried about the infrastructure, the way they cut off the money there and everything stops and the legal chaos that comes from that. So hopefully, we'll never see another pandemic, but I think some sort of pandemic is brewing in Washington that, you know, may work its way down.
And you have to remember that a lot of the state money that we get, like DOT and what have you, that's money that's funneled from the federal government to the state, to the counties and municipalities. So
Even though it's been appropriated. I'll leave it there.
Again, it speaks to the unknowns. You know, we don't know. We don't know if a recession's coming. You know, we don't know what's going to happen with the federal government, but we're prepared. And, you know, that's what this growth in fund balance is. We're prepared. 20 years ago, something unknown happened in the budget, that you were bonding, you were doing all kinds of games to try and figure out how to pay for it. We don't have to play those games because our budget is strong, has a strong foundation. Speaking of a strong foundation, we continue to replenish and maintain our budget reserves. As you know, there's a number of different reserves that we've created that we maintain balances on for a number of different things. Health benefits, liability insurance, workers' compensation. You know, we're self-insured, so it's important that if we have to settle a lawsuit or if health claims run above what we had projected, that, you know, we have the means, again, we are prepared to deal with the unexpected.
Yeah, and we try to manage these reserves and it would almost be irresponsible not to be prepared for a bad claims year, knowing that we're self-insured. It's important to us to know that we have money in place to protect us and to cover us in any event that something catastrophic happens in terms of claims. And actually, one of these accounts, other, outside of insurance, we have this snow removal slash storm trust. It, again, it's money that's available to us should there be, you know, we're in the middle of winter, a crazy snowstorm, a hurricane comes through, a flooding event, anything that, along those lines, we have a foundation to act quickly and the resources to react.
So one of the ways we're building this budget is through responsible and sustainable negotiations with our, with our county's unions. This past year, the board ratified six different successor agreements for various employees, from paratransit to sheriff's officers, prosecutors, investigators, Preakness employees. I, under the guidance of the former administrator, a pattern he developed that I've continued is emphasizing a few key points. Keeping the financial packages within 2% to 3% so that we can make sure that we live within the property tax cap and make sure that we're not having spikes in our, in our tax levy, but also maintaining essential services and recognizing all of the good work that our employees are doing for the residents of Passaic County. And the two big things that we are definitely keyed on in negotiations is containing the cost of both health benefits and prescription benefits. So there's a number of ways we've done that through negotiations. With prescription benefits, we've leveraged our relationship with CVS Caremark, who's our prescription benefits manager, to incentivize the use of generic prescriptions. What we had seen was that in a lot of cases, employees were using name-brand drugs when a much cheaper generic existed. So we're now incentivizing employees to use generic drugs and getting under control the county's traditional healthcare plan. It's richer than the richest plan offered to employees in the state of New Jersey. So we've either eliminated it or placed cost containment provisions on it so that the out-of-network claims, which are really the ones that can drive up the price in our budget, are capped at the Medicare rate. And we've eliminated it for new employees going back to 2015. So shared service agreements. We've focused a lot on this because I do think it's an important tool for the county government, but also our local governments to provide more efficient services for our municipalities and for our shared constituents. At the beginning of this year, we brought Bloomingdale on. It's now the sixth town where we serve as the health officer. That's projected to save Bloomingdale $350,000 over 10 years. And the flip side of that is, you know, a lot of these towns have very small health departments, one or two employees, small budgets. You know, our health department has six divisions, it has 56 employees, it has a $6 million budget. And, you know, that's a contrast. And it's, not only are we saving these towns money, but we're also providing a higher level of service. So to me, it's a win for the towns. It's a win for us. You know, as you'll see here, from West Milford to Woodland Park, there's mayors providing testimonials of the good work our health department's doing and we're hoping to build on that. A few years ago, we secured a grant, hired a shared service coordinator who's focused on nothing but figuring out ways where we can work with our local governments, with other counties, to do more shared service agreements to save money and provide more efficient services. I'm going to get into the, what I started with, the human element of this budget. And one thing this board has done a lot of, especially under Commissioner Lozaro's leadership, is recognize our veterans. We are just, you know, on the tail end of two major conflicts. We had a lot of veterans come home and we've done this on a number of fronts. So as you all know, we're breaking ground or about to break ground in the next 30 days after we get our permits on 65 units of senior and veterans housing. So making sure that our veterans have access to affordable housing in Passaic County. We dedicated a replica of the Vietnam Veterans Memorial Wall, so it's not only providing services and housing and programs, but also recognizing the sacrifice that these Passaic County veterans made. And then it's services. You know, I pulled one out, Operation Helping Hands for homeless veterans. There's a number of programs that we're working in partnership with Catholic charities and other veteran stakeholders to make sure that we're taking care of our veterans. We now have a full-time veteran officer on staff, Sherwood English, who's been doing a fantastic job. He's got a monthly, a weekly meeting with veterans of Passaic County. And finally, you know, we, working in partnership with County Clerk Daniel Ireland Dimhoff and Governor Murphy, we were the first county in New Jersey to bring a veteran service officer into our county building on the first floor. So veterans from across Passaic County can come right here and get the veteran services that, you know, they've earned on both the federal, state, and county levels. Providing essential services for our seniors and, you know, maybe I'll jump right to this because you talked about it, Director Lepore, but last year, we delivered through our Meals on Wheels program, 180,000 meals. We served 40,000 meals at congregate senior sites and we did approximately 31,000 paratransit trips. That's bringing seniors to doctor's appointments and things like that. And to me, this is, you know, one of the most important things that we do. You have homebound seniors that have no other access to food and sometimes no other human contact, but the, you know, the Passaic County driver, that's bringing them their meals. And, yeah, yeah. And, you know, Shirley Forrest, our senior services director, isn't here because she's in the office working late, but, you know, when a snowstorm happens, you know, Shirley Forrest is on the phone with me at 10 o'clock at night figuring out how we're going to make sure we deliver shelf-stabled meals and making sure that our seniors are fed. So I think one of the most important programs we do. I talked a bit about paratransit. Last year, we secured grant funding with the help of Assemblyman Gary Share and our other legislators in Passaic County to start a micro-transit, paratransit service. It's going to be a pilot program in the city of Passaic and the city of Clifton. It's going to be basically like a low-cost Uber where, within the zone, you can get low-cost rides to work, to doctor's appointments, to train stations. And what, but this also does is, now that our paratransit staff is, or our paratransit staff is fully staffed, and we had had a shortage, but we're now fully staffed, it frees them up to do more rides outside the zone. So what I'm hoping happens is this creates more opportunity to do more rides for seniors outside of the zone. The board has spent $5.3 million to create an Up County Satellite Office. It's going to have three different departments. The Health Department, the Human Services Department, and the Nutrition Senior Congregate Site. We currently are leasing space at a firehouse. We're now going to bring that all under one roof and provide expanded services to our seniors. So when they're coming for meals, we're going to, we're going to be offering them flu shots and other services that our health department does and our human services department does. So what I'm hoping is bringing all of these departments under one roof. We're going to be able to offer more for seniors who are coming for meals and to play bingo and to do all those types of things. And we've also emphasized programming. The one I pulled out here was our annual senior picnic at Rifle Camp Park, where there was over 430 seniors. We continue to do programs like that throughout the year, especially at Camp Hope, but also at all of our senior congregant sites around the county, to make sure that seniors have access to activities and recreation, food. And then the Passaic County
Matt, if I may, just very quick, that the health site up in West Milford, once fully operational, will be fully grant funded, operating on grant funds?
Yep. So the $5.3 million was cobbled together from a number of different grant funds. We used American Rescue Plan money. We used a New Jersey Department of Health grant that Dr. Gungill had previously secured.
There was some trust fund money, paratransit.
We used some paratransit trust fund money. We used some opioid settlement money for the human services element of it. So, yeah, with that, a fully grant-funded facility.
Another example of expanding the services without burdening the taxpayers.
And beyond the building of the facility, the services themselves will be grant-funded moving
Operational moving forward.
Yes.
Thank you.
So our park system over the last 10 years has seen historic investment. Not only are we improving the parks we had before, we're expanding. Last year, we broke ground on the Highlands Rail Trail, which will be the first recreational facility in the borough of Wantecue. As you all know, we recently created Dundee Island Park in the city of Passaic. Every one of our parks has gotten, has had improvement projects completed. Our golf course, in my opinion, is the best public facility, the best government-run golf course, for sure, in New Jersey. And I think that's evidenced by the New Jersey State Golf Association And I think that's evidenced by the New Jersey State Golf Association hosting its Public Links Championship in 2031 at our facility. I think it's a testament to all the work Darryl and his team is doing to make sure that's a championship-level course. I'm also going to break a little bit of news here. We've been in discussions, and we are now in agreement with William Patterson to make Preakness Valley their home golf course for this upcoming season, which I also think speaks to the level of play and the shape that that facility is in, and more to come on that. And we continue to invest in our historic sites. Mayor Vergano and Wayne had come to us a year or so ago. They were the owners of the Scholar Colfax House and basically said that he didn't think the town had the resources to fix up the Scholar Colfax House, and he had seen what we had done at the Ray House, at the Dyne Mansion and other historic sites, and asked if the county could do anything. We ended up taking ownership. We're now in the middle of a rehabilitation project there. We have historic sites undergoing rehabilitation projects across the county, the Vreeland House in Ringwood, our historic courthouse is going to undergo almost $12 million exterior restoration, and Lambert Castle, which we've been through many times. I'm not even sure which phase we're on. I think we're in Phase 5, but there's been significant investment in Lambert Castle and the grounds. And for me, improvement to the Passaic County park system is an economic development tool. It's driving tourism, it's creating jobs, sustaining our small businesses, and it's increasing property values. And the example I always use, if you go across the Hudson River in New York, where's the most valued property? It's all of the property around Central Park. So if you create good open space, green space, especially in our dense urban areas, it's going to increase property values and make Passaic County a place where people want to live, and they want to work, and they want to play. So as our auditor talked about, this board made a decision in 2021 to close our jail and to do a shared service agreement with both Bergen and Hudson County. What we've seen since 2020 is $10 million in savings. You'll see a significant decrease in both the salaries and the operating. From 2020, we were appropriating over $37 million. This year, we're appropriating about $11 million. In operating, we had appropriated over 9.4 million. This year, it's 428,000. And this doesn't even factor in the fringe benefit savings, which is generally 75% of the employee's salary. This doesn't factor in the capital expenses that were tied into the Passaic County jail, tens of millions of dollars that were spent keeping that facility open. As, well, I don't know if all of you know, but I know Director Lapore and Commissioner James know the, you know, about the ACLU lawsuit and all the, all of the money that had to be put into that facility to get the living standards up, you know, that we don't have to worry about that anymore. We've seen a significant decrease in workers' compensation matters, savings in attorney's fees, and a reduction in liability. You know, jails are generally bad places, and, you know, bad things can happen in them. And, you know, we still have a lot of lawsuits that we're dealing with from when the jail was open, but we don't have that liability anymore. They did go down, but it was still a driving source of a lot of liability for the county and that we don't have anymore. And the thing I, you know, Director, you alluded to it, the expense to build a new facility was, you know, close to $1 billion, and it couldn't be where it is now because jails don't go up anymore, they have to go out. So we would have had to buy property somewhere, which would have been a cost. And I can tell you, because, you know, I was in these meetings, and we had a lot of meetings with mayors, there's not one mayor in Passaic County that wants a jail in their community. And then we would have had to have spent 600, 700, you know, million dollars to build a new facility. So, you know, in my opinion, you know, we made the right decision here in consolidating with Bergen County and Hudson County and not having to absorb those costs on the Passaic County taxpayers. And then finally, you know, putting Passaic County residents to work. Last year, this board adopted a project labor agreement policy, which means that any public work contract that we did had to include a project labor agreement, which is in agreement with the Passaic County Construction and Building Trades Council. I think President Jackson left, but I did tell him that he was featured in my presentation. That means they're hiring, you know, men and women that live in Passaic County to work on Passaic County projects. You know, it's increased opportunities for women and minorities, there's apprenticeship programs, there's a lot of protections built in there to make sure that, you know, the contractor is paying the men and women working for him, you know, fair living wages. Since then, we've had three contracts awarded with project labor agreements, and, you know, I'm proud to say that they were all within budget. You know, one of my concerns when we adopted this policy and I had this conversation with a lot of you is that it would cost more money. But three bids in, that hasn't been the case with a fourth bid pending for the work on the historic courthouse. And then lastly, the direct hire program, which was another partnership with the Building and Construction Trades Council, which allowed us to hire union men and women from the various trades as seasonal employees, to do projects in-house. And really, where we focus here is those projects between $50,000 and $500,000, where it's very hard for us to get a competitive price and, you know, we're just not getting good bids and we're not getting fair prices. So what we can do with this program is, we can bring on two plumbers, two carpenters, two laborers, pay them as seasonal employees, buy the materials, and do the projects in-house, and essentially cut out the overhead of a general contractor. And the other very important part of all of this is, we're only hiring Passaic County residents to do these jobs and hiring them as seasonal employees. So we're putting our residents to work to make sure that they can provide for their families. You know, a couple of examples. Last year, following one of the storms, we had some trail cleanup at the Highlands Preserve up in, up in West Milford, and Darryl got a quote, and it was over $110,000, $120,000 for a contractor to come out and clean the trails up. We ended up hiring three laborers from local three, three Passaic County residents. They used our tools, they used our machines, and they got it done for less than $20,000 in salaries. So, you know, we're seeing that for a lot of these projects, whether it's, you know, remodeling bathrooms at Preakness Healthcare Center, or our Supervisor of Roads, hiring laborers to create a swing shift to help with our snow removal operation. It's been a very valuable program to save us money and allow us to do more capital improvement programs, but also to put Passaic County residents to work. So that's all I have. If there's any questions? Do we bring the tech tones back?
Matt, I have a question. I'm sorry, I have a question. Matt, the last part, any protected amount of jobs are created in that particularly putting Passaic County residents to work?
With the direct hire program or with the project labor agreement?
Project labor agreement.
I don't have those numbers. I can get those numbers for you. I don't know the number, I don't know the number offhand, but I can give you that number.
I just want, you know, had the honor of being the Budget Chair this year. I learned a lot. I think your idea of, and I guess, I could probably say the campaign of us humanizing the budget. I know Lindsay's there, and there's going to be a series of social media programs that are going to be put together to really bring this budget to the people so that they can understand it a lot better. It's a lot easier than looking at a spreadsheet and trying to comb through the numbers when you have visual examples and highlights, as you highlighted in this PowerPoint, of the real concrete projects of really where the money's going to. So I just want to commend that work, and I look forward to continuing, driving this message of where our county dollars are being used to the community so that they understand it a lot better, and the fact that we're able to maintain that stability is also commendable. So I want to commend you guys, and really the staff as well, for executing this plan that our administrator puts forward and ensuring that we stay within budget and still provide the utmost service to our residents. So thank you guys as well. Thank you, Director.
In the weeks leading up to the final budget vote, the county will highlight how this budget supports residents, piggybacking on what the Budget Chair said. Expanding health services and shared programs with local towns, supporting veterans and their families, strengthening senior services like Meals on Wheels and paratransit, investing in our parks, historic sites and recreational spaces. These updates will provide residents with a closer look at how the county is using resources to address their needs. By showcasing these efforts, we aim to foster a greater understanding of the work being done to strengthen our community. We're making sure that Passaic County is financially strong while continuing to invest in services and programs that matter most to our residents. By keeping the, excuse me, by keeping a healthy fund balance and managing our budget wisely, we are preparing for a future while maintaining the quality of life that our residents come to expect. And we've learned that even though, I've learned my lesson with the five years in a row, no tax increase, unheard of, unprecedented, we just didn't, we didn't do a good job of getting that out there and making the residents understand. I should say, we could have done a better job. We did it, we thought we did a good job, and we could have done a better job of having the residents understand of how the budget works. And that's why these updates that you're going to do in the future there, prior to our final budget vote, is important. And the more towns that we bring on board and get to understand how the process works, the better we'll be. That's all I have. And great job, guys.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
I'll take a motion to suspend the regular order of business.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Moved by Cruz. Second by DeVore. Roll call.
County Commissioners Cruz?
Yes.
DeVore?
Yes.
Duffy? Commissioner Duffy, you with us?
No.
No, he's, he's-
Sorry, I'm here.
Okay. All right. Good. Thank you. James? Deputy Director Lazare?
Here.
Director Lapore?
Yes. Budget matters, number one, resolution to exceed the county budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank pursuant to NJSA 4A:45, period 15@S.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Second by Lazare. Roll call.
County Commissioners Cruz?
Yes.
DeVore?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
James? Deputy Director Lazare?
Yes.
Director Lapore?
Yes. Number two, resolution introducing the Passaic County budget for FY fiscal year 2025 and adopting the same on the first reading in accordance with the requirement of the local budget law.
So moved.
Moved by Cruz.
Second.
Second by Lazare. Roll call.
County Commissioners Cruz?
Yes.
DeVore?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazare?
Yes.
Director Lapore?
Yes.
I'll read it. I'll read it for you, Director. I'd like to read into the record the public notice calling for the public hearing for the cap resolution and the Passaic County budget for 2025 will be held on, on March 11th, 2025 at 5:30. Motion to- Okay. We'll go into the bond. Want me to read it? Okay. All right. Bond ordinance 2025-01, bond ordinance to authorize the making of variance of public improvements and acquisitions of new communications and signal systems equipment and new additional or replacement equipment or machinery in, by, and for the county of Passaic, state of New Jersey, to appropriate the sum of $15,400,000 to pay the cost thereof, to appropriate capital surplus, to make a down payment, to authorize the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriations, and to provide for the issuance of bond participation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bond notices.
Motion to open the public hearing on bond ordinance 2025-01. Moved by James.
Second.
Second by Lazare. Roll call.
County Commissioners Cruz?
Yes.
DeVore?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
James? Deputy Director Lazare?
Yes.
Director Lapore?
Yes. Anyone present with desire to be heard on bond ordinance 2025-01?
Seeing no one, move to Cruz.
Motion made by Cruz.
Second.
Second by Duffy. Roll call.
County Commissioners Cruz?
Yes.
DeVore?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
James? Deputy Director Lazare?
Yes.
Director Lapore?
Yes. Motion to adopt bond ordinance 2025-01.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Duffy. Second by Cruz.
Sure.
Roll call.
County Commissioners Cruz?
Yes.
DeVore?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
James? Deputy Director Lazare?
Yes.
Director Lapore?
Yes. Motion to resume the regular order of business?
Move.
Moved by Cruz.
Second.
Second by DeVore. Roll call.
County Commissioners Cruz?
Yes.
DeVore?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
James? Deputy Director Lazare?
Yes.
Director Lapore?
Yes. County Committee, anyone?
I'll just, if I may, Director, just really quick, it is only fitting that we're celebrating Black Excellence tonight, and on this agenda for our vote is the reappointment of our county council. So I look forward to that vote and look forward to continuing the great work that you have done and that you will continue to do after the vote. So, you know, thank you, Nadej. That's it.
I told him to say that.
I just wanted to comment if you would. Hopefully you can hear me. We lost a great, a great guy, Ed Smith. He was a great, he was a county historian. I don't know if this was mentioned earlier or not, I didn't hear. He was a loss of knowledge for the county and a real gentleman. So I just want to make that, just make that mention. Okay, thank you.
Director, I just want to say thank you again for everyone collectively making the 2025 Black History Month celebration a success. All the hard work and-
Great job. Great job.
Teamwork. Thank you. Trial by fire. Appreciate it, Director. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Bruce? Okay. I'll take a motion to open the public portion of the meeting.
So moved. Second.
Moved by James. Second by Cruz. Roll call.
Second by who? I'm sorry? Cruz?
This is Rodney.
Yeah.
Rodney?
It was DeVore.
Guys sound the same.
County Commissioners Cruz?
Yes.
DeVore?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
James? Deputy Director Lazare?
Yes.
Director Lapore?
Yes. Anyone from the public wishing to be heard during public portion, please step forward, state your name and address, and be mindful that everything you say is a matter of public record. Anyone?
Seeing no one in the public.
I'll second that.
Motion made by-
Well, we'll take it. We'll take it.
Second by Cruz. Roll call.
You're watching on Facebook. County Commissioners Cruz?
Yes.
DeVore?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
James? Deputy Director Lazare?
Yes.
Director Lapore?
Yes. County Council, we have a late starter?
Yes, Director, through you, we have one late starter tonight. It's a resolution authorizing a word of contract to ZN Construction LLC for the site improvements of the Lambert Castle Carriage House complex, per bid C25007 pursuant to NJSA 48:11@SEC. Please add Resolution 050 to the consent agenda.
Okay. Take a motion to add 050?
So moved.
Moved by Cruz?
Second.
Second by DeVore. Roll call.
County Commissioners Cruz?
Yes.
DeVore?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
James? Deputy Director Lazare?
Yes.
Director Lapore?
Yes. Before we take a motion, is there anyone that has anything, want to be voted on? Okay. I will take a motion to approve the consent agenda, 01 to 050. Moved by James?
Moved by James.
Second.
Second by DeVore. Roll call.
County Commissioners Cruz.
Yes.
DeVore.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James. Deputy Director Lazara.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. Under new business, receipt of the supplemental debt statement by the CFO. Received it, right?
Yes. Received and filed.
Received and filed, okay. Number two.
Okay. Bond, bond ordinance 2025 dash oh two, bond ordinance to authorize the undertaking of various public improvements for the Passaic County Community College in, by, and for the county of Passaic, state of New Jersey, to appropriate the sum of four million dollars to pay the cost thereof, to authorize the issuance of bonds, to finance such appropriations, and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds.
I'll take a motion for bond ordinance 2025 dash oh two.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Cruz.
Second.
Second by DeVore. Any discussion? Roll call.
County Commissioners Cruz.
Yes.
DeVore.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James. Deputy Director Lazara.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. Bond ordinance 2025 dash oh three.
Bond ordinance to authorize the making of various public improvements and the acquisition of new additional or replacement equipment and machinery, new additional furnishings, and the information, technology, and telecommunications equipment for Passaic County Community College in, by, and for the county of Passaic, state of New Jersey, to appropriate the sum of two million three hundred and eighty-seven thousand five hundred and thirty dollars to pay the cost thereof, to authorize the issuance of bonds, to finance such appropriations, and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds.
I'll take a motion to approve bond ordinance 2025 dash oh three on first reading.
Move it.
Moved by Lazara.
Okay.
Second by Duffy. Any discussion? Roll call.
County Commissioners Cruz.
Yes.
DeVore.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James. Deputy Director Lazara.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. Take a motion on personnel.